We are ready to go. Yes, ma'am.
I hereby call the October 11th, 2023, meeting of the Rockbridge County Planning Commission to order. First, we'll have roll call. Commission Member Henness, that's me. Commission Member Kramer.
Here.
Commission Member Lucas.
Yep.
Commission Member Whitmore.
Here.
And Commission Member Watkins is absent. In addition to citizens attending the meeting in person, citizens have several options to view or participate in the Zoom meeting webinar as described below. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. One, to join the Rockbridge County Planning Commission Zoom webinar. The link is available on the county website to copy into the address line on your browser. To join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Planning Commission YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. At this time, we will proceed with meeting. We're going to begin with citizen comments, and these would be comments on anything that is not on the agenda for this evening. So do we have anybody signed up to speak?
We do first signed up is Bill Russell.
Okay, Mr. Russell.
Good evening. I'm Joe Russell from Cars Creek District. Thank you. And I also wanted to say thanks for the working group meeting that occurred earlier. It raised some things I think I have maybe some useful answers for, and these are of a general nature with solar energy installations, generation plants. And some of the, some of the issues that were raised up here, I think specifically need to be looked at, and they were, I'm gonna raise them in another venue. I think it's very incumbent upon the county to make sure that they have a complete trail of, of parties of interest in each application for, for special use exemptions before the county. Because I'm looking at some items on here where I found six different names for the same party relatively within a, within a three-year period. And I, I think it would be useful to, to require those parties to give the information about who their, who, and what entities may control them apply, what businesses they've operated under and where. It's, it's it's not difficult to track them, but it's also not easy. They have between two of the parties, there are six different states involved too. And also find one, and I'll address this separately. I, I, I'll just, I'll just put that out there on deconditioning under, under a separate issue here. I think one of the things that, at least I didn't hear discussed, that you may want to look at with regard to toxic panels, and there are significant numbers of solar panels that can be toxic, are EPA regulations and specific references to compliance with RICRA that the county, I think, needs to put in any obligations they, they impose upon a proposed operator here. They, they need to be in compliance with those federal regulations. And they impose also, I think, specific, I don't want to say burdens, but obligations on the county in terms of understanding what kind of disposal operations they'll have. That's, that's my general comment. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak in person? Are you standing to speak?
Mr. Steve Hart, come on down, sir.
Steve Hart, Cars Creek. Thank you for the opportunity to attend the working session earlier. I thought a lot of good points were raised, a lot of good questions were asked. There's some things that I think were not covered that should be covered, and if I am speaking to something that has been covered and I don't know about it, please correct me. I apologize for my ignorance. First, solar fields, commercial ignorant, commercial entrance required. I have to have a commercial entrance on my farm from my farmer's market. So I think it's only proper that all commercial activities should do that. How do we tax this? Is it eligible for land use taxation? When do we do the rollback taxes? Again, we need to have a standard for that. Can they go in the county landfill that was just raised? How much of our land are we willing to commit to this? And I know it was mentioned that Rockingham County did this, and I was present with them. I discussed that with them. Because at some point, we're not making energy for us anymore. We're making energy for somebody else. What type of land do we put these on? Generally, we want to avoid prime farmland, but that means it's flat. We don't have much of that of anything in Rockbridge County. But farmland of statewide importance is really good farmland in Rockbridge County. And how much of our land of that do we really want to commit? What if the stormwater plans proved, stormwater retention bases prove to be too small? What do we do after the fact? Because it'll tell you that some of our modeling on this is probably not very well developed yet. And it's just because we don't have a lot of experience. What area do we talk about? And this is again, came out of Rockingham County. Is the area of the field, the area under panel? Is it the area of the actual panels themselves, or is it the area within a fence? I will tell you, they defined it originally as the area under panel. And they came back, and I heard one of the people that planned this, somebody, we should have done it area within the fence. It actually makes more sense if you do it that way. What are we going to do with land that the NRCS has determined as highly erodible land? If I get an H E L designation on my land, there are certain things that the NRCS doesn't allow me to do under our conservation best practices. Grading and land disturbance activity estimates. Need to see a pre and post grading plan. Pretty much standard things. All of these, and there's probably more questions that we need answers to. And not only do we need the questions, we kind of need to know what the acceptable range of answers are. What's our limit? What are we willing to do? What are we not willing to do? And I've spoken at several of these. I'm not sure the number up to six, eight, 10, something like that. This is not an exception anymore. This is becoming its own rule. And when we start doing this, we actually need consistency. The developers need consistency. The neighbors need consistency. The citizens need consistency. And I think engaging in a process that can give us that, whether it's an ordinance, a standard, a standard set of questions or something, is actually a precursor to moving forward on any of these. Because if we don't have a plan, we always end up somewhere where we don't want to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Mr. Max Smith. Maxime of Buffalo District. I'm here first of all, as the President of Rockbridge County Farm Bureau, and Farm Bureau took a stance on this also, and Virginia Farm Bureau had to. And we're not opposed to solar fields. So, I prefer fields, not farms. It's getting them to be with the farm. But not on prime land. That was Virginia Farm Bureau policy is not on prime land. Now, I also was here this evening to the work session and heard a lot of, heard the comments that the other two gentlemen have heard. And I really do think we need to go back and, and get the citizen group together like we started out three years ago, I think it was, before COVID, when the Chris that we.
I don't know if it's that long ago, but it's been a while.
Been a while. So we can come up with the best ordinance possible. And I sat there where y'all did for 10 years. I was on the board supervisor for eight years. And I know what it takes to make a good ordinance, and it is the community coming together with all the, all the inputs, pros and cons and everything else. And we will have a good results if you go back and start that process so we can have the right, the best in the state is what I would try to, to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Lee Merrill.
Longtime Rockbridge resident, but now living in Lexington. I just want to concur with Mr. Smith's analysis that you, you've got to get focused here. This is the first waves of several generations of these that you're going to have to confront. The ordinance needs to be immediately brought up to the standard that was just described to you. The tools are available. The resources are available as soon as the political decision makers say this is a priority. So please give the support to your staff and, and the supervisors in making this the first order of business, please, please.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill.
That is all that signed up, but we will recognize anyone at this time that was not able to sign up.
Okay, do we have anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Do we have anybody online? Zoom or phone?
There's any attendees that would like to make a citizen comment, please feel great. Use your raise your hand button now. Not seeing any. Turn the floor back over to the chair.
Okay. Agenda item number three, approval of the September 13th, 2023 meeting minutes. Did you all have an opportunity to review those? Any questions, amendments, changes?
I make a motion to accept.
Okay, make a motion to accept this presented.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. The motion passes. We are now ready for the board reports of staff.
Yes, at their September, second September meeting, the Board of Supervisors approved the zoning text amendment pertaining to childcare and the agricultural transitional zone and allowed that by special exception. This would be your traditional, not your in-home daycare, of course, with four or less children, I think it is, but more of a business model type thing. So that was approved per planning commission recommendation. At September 20th, 2023, the Board of Zoning Appeals met to approve the July 19th, 2023 minutes and some updates, modifications to the electronic meeting policy. The TCO did not meet in September.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number five, Volcano Energy LLC. Application for a special exception permit to develop a five acre, or no, five milliwatt, what is that? M W? AC solar project, megawatt. Okay, there we go. Solar project. The property is located on the south side of Moore's Trail Route 794. We have a staff presentation.
Bear with me. I'm gonna share my screen, get everyone oriented, and then turn it over to the applicant.
Volcano Energy LLC has made an application for a special exception permit to develop a five megawatt AC solar project. The property is located on the south side of Moore's Trail, further identified as 690, excuse me, 794, approximately 0.14 miles west of the intersection of Moore's Trail and Steel's Fort Road. Steel's Fort is further identified as 706. The property is owned by Sylvia G. Moore and further identifies as tax map number 40-a-1. A portion of the property, what we have here is the Moore property is outlined in green here. And then the outline of the fence, the proposed fence for the solar array is outlined in magenta with the access roads being shown in gray. A portion of the property, I'm starting on my zoning layer as I'm chatting. A portion of the property is zoned in the agricultural and general use districts. That's going to be the A2 zoning district in white on the screen. While the remainder of the property is zoned in the agricultural transitional districts, that is the light pink on the green, on the screen, excuse me. Per section 603.03-9 of the regulations, public utilities are used by special exception in the A2 zoning district. Per section 603B, period 03-14 of the regulations, public utilities are used by special exception in the AT, Agricultural Zoning District, Agricultural Transitional Zoning District. The proposed five megawatt solar site is on approximately 75 acres of the Moore Track. Again, further identified as 40-a-1 and consisting of 149 acres, point, 149.127 acres total per tax records. Some of the Moore Track is currently used for crop production, while other portions of the track are used for hay production. The portion of the track that is proposed to be the solar field is currently used for hay production. The project is located within the tourism corridor overlay such as Route 11 in this case. The special exception permit is proposed is for the proposed use of the property, and the site plan will be required to be reviewed and approved by the TCO board. Staff will update the, the planning commission accordingly. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to this whaling, walling, excuse me, with Volcano Energy LLC. If you bear with me, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and pull up their presentation.
Thanks. Hi, good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. Okay, absolutely. I will try. Hi, my name is Alexandria Walling. I am here to represent the applicant Volcano Energy. We are proposing a five megawatt solar distribution facility. That means that this is a facility that will be interconnected to the existing utility infrastructure, Dominion Energy, to be exact. And a distribution, a distribution level solar project is considered to be a smaller scale project, not to be confused with a transmission level project. So, Chris, thank you. Obviously went through a lot of the key facts of the project. I won't bore you with going through all of it, but I will need to repeat some of that. So, as I said, I am here representing the applicant Volcano Energy. This is the solar site. Everything with permitting and everything will be connected with Volcano Energy. I have with me tonight, members of my team that I may defer to for some of our questions and part of the presentation. Part of the people that are here, we also have asked a representative from Aspen Power who does own the LLC. They will also, they are committed and they are the long-term owner of the project. And they will also be the operations and maintenance manager. In conjunction with that, many people have been approached by Innovate a Solar. We are the developer and the construction partner on that. So that is a little bit unique. Sometimes you have four separate parties. We are, we are two parties that have been working together for coming on a little over five years now. So we work together in all those aspects to try to add as much expertise in our particular portion of that. So, for this particular site, we would like to say in selection of the site, there was a lot of work that went in prior to just picking a farm and deciding to go there. There was a lot of research into the existing utility infrastructure for locations that had capacity and needed load. Having considered that, we select our site, and then we go through a screening process of the site. So, many, many things to consider. We do investigations to figure out environmental constraints. We do take into consideration site visibility and the impact and try to make plans for those. What I would like to present tonight is that we remember that this is the conceptual plan. We are absolutely open to more feedback. And a lot of the, the designs that will continue to progress in the permitting process into the Board of Supervisors will be integrated into this plan for other opportunities to be, to be reviewed again. I would also like to point out that in the environmental constraints that were considered on this particular farm area, I know that there is a lot of concern about the prime farmland. We have identified that, and we also identified the existing forested land coverage, and we avoided that in our site planning. So I'm going to move on to the next slide. So on the next two slides, I've actually provided, it's the same site plan because it's a little bit difficult to put these on the slides. We do have an aerial view, and we also have a black and white view, which you hold those in front of you. What I would like to point out on these is, as we said, this is primarily tax parcel 40-a-1, which is currently zoned as A2 and AT. The majority of the site is owned as AT. The majority, our, our portion where we're proposing the site is currently used for hay production. The remainder of the property will be available for continued agricultural operations. It is also located in the South River Magisterial District in the northern Rockbridge County area, adjacent, basically adjacent to Route 11, approximately half a mile from I-81 and situated between Great Road and Moore's Trail. So, what I would like to bring your attention to, again, this is the same site plan, just another view in case it's easier for other people to see. We have considered setbacks. We have 65 feet setbacks from Moore's Trail. We have 50 foot from the side and rear portions of the premises, which I would like to point out, that is still land that is owned by the, by the landowner. But along the property lines between the solar arrays and the existing residences, we have a 75-foot setback instead of the required 50 foot. The closest residence is over 250 feet from the near solar array, and the arrays are over 500 feet from the closest state highway. In reviewing the site, you will notice we, within the setback area, we do have highlighted in green and in red our proposed landscaping. In addition to the existing vegetation, which we will maintain, we are proposing a, a single row of trees. And we are additionally proposing a double row of trees at the, at the break in the existing vegetation buffer that is near Great Road. So that would be the most possible for the visual impact there. Excuse me, just one moment. Want to make sure I didn't miss anything. I will also note that our, our project narrative did note that the project structures would be no more than 35 feet. We stated 35 feet because that was a standard. Our, our standard that we couldn't go above, we were just pointing that out. However, our facility will not be over 15 feet. So I'd just like to go ahead and clarify that. So having said that about the landscape buffers, we have tried to provide some renderings of the places that we find might have the most impact and just give a general idea of what the community members can anticipate to see. So as we mentioned, we proposed the double row of evergreen trees here at Great Road. The depiction on the left will be what we expect to see at planting, and then the depiction on the right is at maturity. We engaged with the, with the community and also were requested to provide a rendering. This is actually on the south side of North Lee, North Lee Highway Road, Highway, excuse me. So this rendering, it's a little bit difficult to see because it's over 800 feet from our project. So this is where there is a break in the existing vegetation, and as we said, we're going to do some supplemental planting to provide one row of, we'll be proposing one row of evergreen trees there. In our plans, now these are again, very early prelim, preliminary plans. We would like to highlight the fact that we will be going through very rigorous stormwater management planning. This will be reviewed by V I D Q, and it also has to be approved by the, by the county. I do have our civil engineer that can speak in better detail to this. But just in a general discussion, we, we will continue to plan for this, and it will also include temporary erosion and sediment control devices. And those can be diversion ditches, temporary sediment basins, silt fence, velocity control, amongst other things. You will notice if you refer back to the site plans, we do have proposed areas where we anticipate to have retention ponds. Again, this is preliminary, but we wanted to make sure that we do have room to accommodate what we expect in our experience of development, to go ahead and have room for what we think will be the required measures there. In addition to these plans, there are permanent stormwater control devices. These will be reviewed by Rockbridge County and installed to reduce stormwater runoff rates below the pre-development levels. Additionally, reduce phosphorus discharge from the site, meeting again, the Commonwealth's limit standards. These devices may include infiltration basins, grass wells, dry swells with fire retention treatment media, storm water, stormwater retention and detention basins, and preservation of forested land. Again, we do have our civil engineer. I'd like to give him a chance at the, when I'm done, to speak a little bit more onto these. In addition to our civil engineer, we also have council with us. We believe that we are in compliance with the county's comprehensive plan. We have made references to certain sections of that comprehensive plan and just would love a chance to really highlight the benefit that we think we can bring to the community. We know that there are multiple concerns, and we'd love to engage with you guys on any of that. I'm going to skip over this so that council can actually address those when I'm completed. We do also want to share that the effect on the community and the neighborhood character. We do understand that, that solar farms can bring some concerns and, and some fear. And we would like to be there to kind of assist and, and listen to the community on what they're looking for there. Some studies, we do, we do have a lot of supporting studies that we're happy to submit as supplemental materials if necessary. But we find that solar farms are a good passive neighbor. We, we, our company is committed in our, in our construction, we have a sustainability standard that we have to adhere to. We also work for pollinator habitats. In some sites, we, we know that it's something that is talked about. In our seeding for the entire site, we include pollinator native seeding. So you will see some pretty flowers in some areas, but even underneath the panels and that area, the seeding that we put there is pollinator friendly. It is native, and it's intended to, to, to help with the soil retention there. We have found with these pollinators that we are finding regeneration and biodiversity under these sites. And we're also seeing some benefits to some of the neighboring agricultural lands from the addition of the, the new flora and fauna. Our particular, our particular designs will use simple pile-driven post rack design. This does not require cement, and it is, it is a much faster process, so we'll have a limited time of sound disturbance. I'm sure you've heard it before. Solar can bring diversified incomes primarily for the landowner, of course, but also for the community. I have not included a presentation on the, the tax benefits because those are still being worked out. And this is something that we're also open to negotiation with the community. So there, obviously, there's, there's definitely different ways that we can address that. And we're committed to signing an agreement to meet what the community needs. Again, just want to talk about the, the, the neighborhood character. It is a passive, secure neighbor with low traffic impacts. When you look at the life of the project, there will be traffic during construction that will be a limited amount of time. The vegetative screening that we are proposing is, you know, in addition to maintaining what is already there. As a company, again, we are submitted, we are committed to sustainability practices, and we do recycle our panels. And it is quite rigorous setup, and if you want more information, we can provide supplementary material about that. And just wanted to again, say, even though we said no higher than 35 feet, our, our facility will not be more than that. We find that our low-profile panels are typically lower than mature corn stalks. For this particular site, we are going to try every measure that we can to avoid any grading. So there may be a little bit difference in some lines of panels and things like that, but it will not be anything too major. We also have attempted to reach out to the neighborhood, to the neighborhood and the neighbors. We also plan after this hearing to have a community meeting, inviting everyone along. With the lack of the ordinance, we thought it would be good to give a public forum, have With the lack of the ordinance, we thought it would be good to give a public forum, have feedback from, from the commute, from, from the permitting offices and then be able to integrate that with the community. We have observed other feedback through our landowner and social media and things like that. So we took those into consideration and just wanted to again highlight, we avoided the prime farmland on the property. And we are also avoiding the existing forested timber coverage areas. At the same time, the land, we're not buying the land, we are renting it from the landowner so they can maintain ownership of their family farm. And obviously observe their rights to utilize the rest of the land as they see fit. We have increased setbacks greater than the Rockbridge County requirements along the property lines bordering the residences. And again, added the proposed double row of evergreen trees where we thought that there was going to be the greatest impact. In considerations of the access road, we do understand it's, there will be some impact, but we did look at the site and tried to figure out the route of least impact on the least amount of people. And that's where we went ahead and put it on Morse Trail. We've got to make a longer access road even for ourselves, but it's going to have the least impact. Our civil engineer can talk a little bit more about that where it has off of Lee Highway. It, it will be less impact for turn in at, at the road there rather than creating a new one. That is also closer to even more neighbors. I'm sure I've forgotten a few things here, but if I could have, if it's okay, I would like to let our civil engineer speak for a moment and also our council and Neil from Wired Gill.
Excellent. I'll just leave that as is. Good evening. My name is Sean Malo. Good evening. My name is Sean Malo. I work with Kimley Horn and Associates. We're a civil engineering firm. I've been practicing civil engineering in Virginia since two thousand and ten. Been doing solar specifically in Virginia since two thousand and sixteen. I've worked on projects anywhere from three megawatts all the way up to five hundred megawatts. Both on this early stage development like we're here talking about tonight, but also all the way through full civil construction plans. And seeing those projects get constructed by contractors. Ally hit a lot of the high points tonight and I'm sure we backed up here maybe to discuss some of the other comments or thoughts that y'all may have as well. I just wanted to touch on the access real quick as well. So when looking at construction vehicles, most of our vehicles are going to come in on eighteen wheelers. So very typical construction deliveries of equipment, panels, racking, those types of things. So we won't need any special permits typically for those. And when we are looking at the access, Steel's Mill or Steel's Ford Road has a median break in Route eleven and there's already left turn lanes and right turn lanes there, which will help facilitate construction traffic to get off of Route eleven onto Steel's Ford and then obviously onto Morse Trail. So that was a key for us. Our construction schedule is about six to twelve months and there will be a peak time of deliveries. We think that'll be maybe two months long. So even during that relatively condensed time, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we weren't going to stack up on Route eleven. And if we got a direct access point off Route eleven, it would have been more complicated and, and probably would have had more of effect on, on the public. Related to the grading, this comes up a lot when it comes to stabilization and topsoil and things like that. The thing I wanted to mention there is every year it seems like tracker technology is advancing. So the trackers are basically the systems we use under the panels that rotate the panels as the sun moves throughout the day. And the tracker technology is evolving to conform more to the land. So they're becoming more articulating. The pile adjustments can be done more to absorb the change in grade in the system, in the steel system rather than doing more grading. So we're very familiar with all those leading edge technologies. We utilize those in our design based on what the technology is selected by the owners and we integrate that into our grading plans to minimize grading, minimize the movement of topsoil so that we can maintain any existing vegetation that is there today. But also minimize any grading we have to do to implement the system. Also up there and we feel, I'll have time later for any questions that you all have. So thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Anne Neil Cosby and I'm a land use attorney at Wired Gill. I'm proud to be here representing the applicant. I'm going to speak very briefly because it's the legalese portion of the presentation about the comprehensive plan. And in particular, of course, one of the planning commissioners roles in reviewing this application would be to determine whether the application is substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan and that's pursuant to state law and it's Virginia Code fifteen point two twenty-two thirty-two. So it's usually called a twenty-two thirty-two review. So one of your roles is to decide whether the, the application is substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan so that you can satisfy that state law mandate, but then also of course is the application for purposes of the special exception permit in conformance with your comprehensive plan. And we've put information in the application. I did a deep dive, if you will, on the comprehensive plan and the, with regard to the land use, the map. This area is designated on the map as a rural, in a rural area, but if you look at the rest of the map, it is located just west of areas designated as institutional and village areas. So very close to those areas and also close to areas that have been designated as interstate interchange areas. And not surprisingly, those are the areas around Interstate eighty-one and sixty-four. And as you've seen, this project is just south of Interstate eighty-one and north of eleven. So while the property is designated under the comp plan as rural, it is surrounded literally by interchange exchange areas, institutional areas and these village areas. And so what does that mean? In the comprehensive plan, institutional areas are areas applicable to densely populated institutional areas, including universities, colleges, public school campuses and governmental campuses. Village service areas are characterized by the presence of existing development, accommodating road networks and existing or proposed access to public water and sewer. Roughing is determined to be such an area. The types of uses allowed would include mixed residential, retail, civic, parks rec and most importantly, small scale industrial. So again, sort of higher density within all of those areas. So while we want to protect agriculture, this is not, you know, in the, in a primary residential part of the county. So with regard to the location, we believe it's consistent with the character of the comprehensive plan. Next, we look at the goals of the plan and in particular, the comprehensive plan, chapter five, economy and chapter nine, land use. The, the application and the proposed use satisfies various goals in the, the, the economy chapter of the comprehensive plan. And those would include encouraging, I'm not going to read all of these. There are some in these slides, but I know there's a lot of people that want to address this. But encouraging industrial, technological, education, business development to provide jobs, increase personal income and increase the tax base. So that goal is satisfied and of course attracting new business. The proposed project specifically aligns with the county's strategy of supporting the development of green energy related jobs and their associated educational programs. And to support related projects that are compatible with the environment and existing land use and certainly renewable energy in an area like this on the distributive scale size versus a utility scale certainly meets that goal. With regard to land use, the development of the project on the proposed property satisfies a number of the objectives. Agricultural, the, from the comprehensive plan, agricultural soils of the highest quality should be preserved as an important natural resource. The soils on this property are actually identified as being moderately productive soils based on the maps. So again, and you've heard Ally say that we've been very intentional in trying to preserve prime farmland and again, identifying what types of soils, you know, would be, would be affected in this area. The comprehensive plan discourages the development of permanent structures in areas situated within the hundred year floodplain. The project is located outside of the floodplain. It also avoids historic landmarks and steep slopes. The project will be designed, landscaped and buffered to preserve the visual quality of this surrounding area. And lastly, the proposed project is an appropriate transitional use given its location between the two interstate exchanges. So again, of the various land use goals, the project we believe is substantially in accord with those goals in the economy. And also just given its location makes a lot of sense as a transitional use between sort of the higher density uses as you move out into the more rural areas of the county. So I'm happy to answer any of these questions and I appreciate your time.
Okay, is that, we ready to move on? We're ready to move on to the public hearing? Unless, do you guys have questions for any of these people yet or do you want to move on to the public hearing? Okay, all right. So let's see. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone physically here to speak? I'm guessing there are.
There is. First up is Mr. Robert Moore with Mr. Tim Clark on deck next.
And I just, before everybody starts, I want to say two things. Remember there's a three minute time limit. So you'll see that, you know, we're not trying to be rude, but we've obviously got a lot of people. Also, if you're going to restate something that's been stated, you're welcome to come up and just say, I agree with Mr. Whoever and, but if you have something new to add, obviously we want to hear that. So just in the interest of time, just keep that in mind. So Mr. Moore, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Robert D. Moore. I'm sister, my sister-in-law is the one that wants to put this solar power farm out there. I think it's, it's imperative that we go back and follow the lineage of the, of the Moore Farms. My grandmother bought the farm on Route eleven, oh, you're beyond the brewery in nineteen eleven. She had three sons. Robert D. Moore, John Scott Moore and Harry Chambers Moore. Harry Chambers Moore married Margaret Bell. Reason I'm telling you that, that's my mother and father. They had four boys and one girl. And when my father died, my uncles, John Scott Moore and Robert D. Moore gave my mother the rest of the place. Now to get back to, I had the power of attorney for my mother. She was not well. She'd worked in a dairy helping my brother run a dairy. I told my brothers and sister that we ought to give the home place on Route eleven to my brother, John Moore. John Scott Moore. We call him Will. The family does. And we did that. We gave, we gave the farm to him. He found out at the upper end of Morse Trail, there was a farm for sale. So he bought it. And I mean, he's a farmer. He found out that one, to the east of him was for sale. So he bought that one. His theory was they're not making any more land. And then John got sick. He had open heart surgery. And he passed away in ninety-seven. That left, he had three heirs. Myself, Robert D. Moore, William Thomas Moore and Betty Ann Ferguson, my sister. We got together and decided we had three farms. There wasn't any use to try to making money off your brother or your sister. So my sister took the home place on Route eleven, oh, you're the brewery. I took the one nearest interstate. And by the way, I've got eight tenths of a mile of interstate on my farm. So I mean, it's going to remain a farm.
Thank you. Sorry, your time is up. Do we have, do you have somebody else that is here to speak on your behalf or going to the next? Next person? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tim Clark and on deck would be Judy Clark. Yes, and then you're next.
Board members, I'm Tim Clark. I'm an adjacent landowner to proposed solar site. Looking over this, I looked at it, the volcano energy capital exemption permit application states on page eight that it abides by the county's comprehensive plan strategy stating that agricultural soils of the highest quality should be preserved as an important natural resource. It states that the soils of the proposed site are identified as being moderately protective soils, quote. The application's assertion that the site contains only moderately productive soils stands in stark contrast to the national corporation, national cooperative soil survey report. Which shows that this proposed site has the potential exemptional agricultural yield. Though the proposed forty-six acre site will not be on prime farmland, it will be placed on farmland designated as farmland of statewide importance. Which has potential per acre crop yields of a hundred and seventy bushels of corn and four and a half to six tons of alfalfa hay. In comparison, prime farmland has a potential per acre yield of two hundred bushels of corn and six tons of alfalfa hay. Considering this information, the application to strip this farm of its productive topsoil will permanently destroy it. Turning it into a solar field should not even be up for consideration by the planning commission. As it flies directly in the face of the county's comprehensive strategy of maintaining and preserving agriculture soils of the highest quality as an important natural resource. Please vote on this project for the future of farmers of Rockbridge County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This Judy Clark and on deck would be Art.
Like to thank, I'm Judy Clark. I'd like to thank the committee for having our concerns, hearing our concerns. I oppose the volcanic energy project of Morse Trail. The Fairfield project seemed to have opened Pandora's box. Is a perfect visual of ruination that could be duplicated four miles down the road. The Mackey's Lane project laid a strong foundation for future oppositions by providing concrete factual, factual points of consideration. Our supporters here have done the same. I'd like to focus on how this property affects my family's quality of life. Like many of my neighbors, this project is literally in our backyard. For us, it's by our driveway, behind our house. And if you consider the road in front of us. your, our land value will be, will plummet. And who wants to be mostly surrounded by an industrial site? The entrance off Morse Trail, emphasis on trail as the name implies, is a narrow gravel road with two blind curves. We have to pull off the grass to let the farmers pass. I routinely take my granddaughter to school, which is right at the beginning and end of the workday. The proposed zoned Buffalo Creek Boys School will have their entrance off this road. The proposal states sixty-nine month, or six to twelve months construction traffic. This will include trucks, loaded transfer trucks and large equipment, and I'm concerned and afraid for us all. Per the proposal, the retention ponds on the west side of the complex are located in the vicinity or near the wet weather spring that flows into Morse Creek. Extensive studies have been done by the Division of Environmental Quality as part of the Chesapeake Bay watershed. These watersheds are likely tied into our well system. Like most of our neighbors, we have a well. Our well is about a hundred and eighty feet deep and was mostly lined due to the pockets of ledge and cavernous-like areas. When water was hit, we were getting about a hundred and fifty gallons per minute. According to the well driller, we are on a lake. What will happen to our family's source of drinking water when the proposed systems fail? This includes runoff, pounding of the pilings, retention pond overflow and not being adequate, and them not being adequately lined. Our peace and tranquility will be gone. Dust and debris from the construction and earth moving areas will be relentless with the constant wind on this farm. It will prove to be de- detrimental to our health, home and outdoor activities. This farm will be destroyed by the industrial site and the decommissioning is equally devastating. Topsoil removal.
Thank you.
Could you spell your last name when you come up here, please?
Good evening. I'm Markini, South River District. I have a lot to cover, so I'm gonna be. Sorry if I had talked fast. Uh, in December of two thousand twenty-two, a study was prepared for the Virginia Department of Environmental Claims Madison University. In that study, it was noted that Morse Creek is listed as impaired due to water quality violations of general aquatic life standard and that excess sediment was identified as the primary stressor in Morse Creek. The study notes that impervious cover around the truck and repair station in Grayfeen has grown significantly over the past fifteen years, leaving Morse Creek with significantly less of an opportunity for recovery. In addition, when rainfall amounts exceed the capacity of the soil to infiltrate the water, the excess water runs off and contributes to erosion. Soil groups found in Morse Creek watershed indicated naturally slow infiltration rate to, due to a high water level. Water table, high water table, rather than a lack of infiltration capacity. The Virginia Mercury in two thousand twenty-two reported that there have been several high-profile cases relating to solar projects concerning sediment pollution. The most notorious being the Essex Solar Project in Essex County, which led to a twenty-four, two hundred forty-five thousand dollar fine. More recently, Dominion Energy's Belcher Soldier Project was defined, was fined fifty thousand dollars when stormwater runoff in two thousand twenty-two, or twenty twenty flowed into Harris Creek in Louisiana, Louisic County. On March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality announced a policy change regarding runoff from solar panel projects, quote, "to safeguard the protection of downstream waterways and pro- properties as well as ensure consistency, consistency with EPA's Chesapeake Bay program," unquote. Under the old policy, only solar panel support posts and beams were considered impervious areas. Our, however, the approach had potential to underestimate post-development runoff and runoff rate for solar panels. Under the new policy, solar panels are to be considered impervious areas when performing post-development watering quality calculations. The stated proposal states that the water, stormwater erosion control features included in the volcano energy project are designed to meet the county and state requirements, but it does not specify which requirement, old or new, are being used in the design. Regardless of the weather, with the current design would meet the new requirements and inevitable runoff and erosion that proposed solar project could have a further detrimental effect on water quality and water temperature in the South River watershed and its fishery. I believe the additional rock, the project would not be worth the risk to already impaired Morse Creek watershed, therefore I oppose it.
Thank you. Good timing.
Uh, next up is Chris Baumann, Book Boomin, Baumann, uh, with Jeff Wallace on deck.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. My name's Chris Baumann. I'm from the Walker's Creek District. Uh, I am, I'm not practicing law anymore, but I'm a tax attorney by training. And over the last decade since I've been here, board of supervisors for this county, bought a tot, uh, guest on several occasions have asked me to come and present. In this case, uh, Ms. Clark asked me to come and talk to you and say, well, why is there a tax attorney here who wants, or a former tax attorney here who wants to talk about a solar project? And the reason is, is because there is no solar project. This is, the, all that this exists, the only reason it will ever happen or is even being planned is because of taxes. It's because of the investment tax credit and it's because of the deductions and the accelerated schedules that are currently being put forward by the IRS. You say, oh, okay, what, what's the impact there? Well, the impact is this. This county needs to know who they're going to be dealing with, what types of entities they're going to be dealing with. Are they going to have any ability to know who those entities are down the future or any control over those entities? And the answer to that is no. Right now, if they've set this up properly, and I'm assuming they have, it will never matter to them if any solar energy is produced. As long as it's operational, they will qualify for the code. Right now, in these code, this changes with each iteration and new passage of one of these giant omnibus bills. But right now, there's a five-year period where the company is going to be able to get its investment tax credit back and advanced depreciation or accelerated depreciation, meaning they get all their money back. So what are they going to do after that? Well, then they're going to sell it. They're going to sell it to another LLC and that LLC is going to get advanced depreciation. And after five years, they're going to sell it to somebody else. And each one of these LLCs are going to be less legitimate, farther removed. And you are going to be sitting in a situation where you have an LLC that's an alphanumeric number that means nothing, that you don't know who owns it because it's registered out of Delaware. And you've got to think about, are we going to be able to enforce any of these rules against those individuals? Can we find these individuals? And if we do find them, will they simply walk away? I think about this. This is, when you usually have a business, you have a business that wants to be in business. They want to sell tires or they, they want to build a customer base. Here, they don't need any of that. They, think about, imagine having to deal with, regulate or interact with an entity that has no fear of being sued because it can simply collapse the LLC and disappear. It has no fear of reputational damages, has no ties to this community. That, that's what we're getting. That's, if, that's if nothing goes wrong, that's what we're getting. Now, what will probably happen and what has happened consistently, twelfth year maybe, if we're lucky, things are going to get, start to go wrong. It's going to start leaching in the water. All of a sudden, as, as we heard earlier, there is a lake underneath this land. That lake is ruined. Now we have a brown site. Okay, so who do we go after? That LLC vanishes the minute they know they can't make money. Property owner, property owner is gone. You have no one to seek redress. The county will have to take the property and you will own an environmental disaster. That's, that's what, that is what this is structured for. Thank you. I'll stand for the question.
Uh, Jeff Wallace and Brian Duckworth on deck.
I live across from the interstate from where this is going, and this has got China tangled all around it. So I'm opposing it. I think a lot of people here are opposing it. If I try to pull this off in my business, I get fired.
Thank you.
Brian Duckworth, followed by Bill Russell.
Thank you, members of the council. Uh, I'm Brian Duckworth. I am a recent move, uh, from North Carolina to this beautiful county. And I believe I'd like to just say a little bit about that. My grandfather always was looking for good land, and this is good land. And we should be stewards of this good land for our generations to come. And things like this are unnecessary and our farming community, they're all behind us right now. We're coming into the defense of them to see that these things are not done to this beautiful land. When people come up through this area to tour, to see, they want to see leaves, they want to see beautiful landscapes. And they don't want to see solar panels. And I might add, these folks here have already said and showed the fact that, and are embarrassed by the fact of what these things are going to be as nothing but an eyesore. So I vehemently oppose this. I defend my, my neighbors and I ask that you consider this for our future generations and for our locals, uh, our local folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Russell, uh, followed by Steve Hart.
Bill Russell again. Uh, I rise to oppose this. The, uh, and it speaks directly to what I spoke about earlier as far as the details following the trail of, of multiple LLCs and corporations. Uh, and, and they, in their presentation indicated that they were owned by Aspen Power. And, but there was an operating agreement with, I believe it's Innovation Solar in Indianapolis. Uh, before it was owned by Apple, apparently it was controlled by Safari Energy, which was listed as the principal business address for Volcano. At the same time, your application shows their principal business address to be Indianapolis where innovation is. So I'm not sure who actually controls this. It doesn't look like uh, Volcano is anything other than a holding company transferring the project.
Thank you.
Steve Hart, followed by Tom Lackey.
Steve Hart, I'm a farmer in Cars Creek. I also have PhD in civil engineering. I've been a Virginia professional engineer for thirty years. I have taught infrastructure courses, which I wrote at both West Point and BMI for over ten years. I only mention that because it's relevant to the comments that I'm about to make. One of the things we hear when advocating for solar fields on agricultural land is that, well, after we're done, it can always be returned to agricultural land. This is simply not true. When you consider the Alexander Farm in Fairfield, the soil type there is twenty-two C Frederick silt loam. There's the soil survey for it. The soil is seventy-four inches thick. Over ten feet of soil have been moved. That soil no longer exists. That farmland of statewide importance no longer exists. It is simply not there. The soil survey for that site is not accurate. The citing question, the soil is type twenty-five C Fredericksburg Watalla complex. So there's two different types of soils there. Loam ranges goes down to about sixteen to twenty-four inches, depending on which part of the soil you have there. If you disturb that, it doesn't come back. Now, I had a lot of education, civil engineering, and you know, they never taught me about agricultural soils. I've learned that since then. An agricultural soil is a precious fragile thing. It's not just the dirt. It's the water. It's the microflora. It's the microfonic. It's the fungus, the bacteria. It is so much going on in that soil that we are only beginning to understand. And when you go in and disturb that, it doesn't come back. It just doesn't come back. And while putting a solar panel up may solve one problem, putting it on an agricultural land is going to cause another problem. And we lose that. And by the way, energy is one of our sixteen critical infrastructures, but food and agriculture is also one of them. And solving a problem in one infrastructure which creates a problem in another infrastructure doesn't actually help us. Now, that's a bigger question than we just have to deal with here in Rockbridge County. There are more people than us have to deal with it, but we have our little piece and part of that too. We don't grow our own food. Somebody else will. You don't like foreign oil. How are you going to like foreign food? By the way, I stole that from somebody who stole it from somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tom Lackey, followed by Luke Grant. Yeah, if you want, if you want to start talking, I can pull that up for you. Yes, sir.
I just want to show everybody where, where I live, which is about forty yards from the fence. And, uh, and some of the other areas.
If you want to provide your address, that'd be sufficient.
Twenty-eight big pipeline.
Okay, we can, we can make that up.
Okay.
Anyway, a lot of people, okay.
Well, they can't display and having a hard time displaying. So if you want to go ahead and check, we can.
You can bring it up. My trailer is right there.
Okay. Adjacent to the property. I'm, yes, sir.
And I've heard, heard a lot of things about storms, water drainage. And Virginia Tech is just starting to do a study on vegetation and storm events. Another guy's doing a local water quality study. And these studies are just start. So nobody's got the information yet. And I didn't see the slide, but there's my trailer. Forty, about forty yards from the fence. And across over here, the field of land, retirement, assisted living. You start having storms come through there. It's going to do a lot of damage. And bring up his point. He was talking about the exit off eleven on the Steel Fort Road. Well, the truck drivers today are going to follow their GPS. They're going to get off at exit two or five. They're going to come up by the truck stop. They're going to get on Steel Fort Road and drive to the job site. And that road doesn't even have a yellow line in the middle of it. It's about three, three miles probably through that way. Now, what are you going to do with the panels when they go away? There's bound to be some that make it through tech, you know, the, uh, and then there's going to be some damaged and shit. Then in fifteen years from now, they're all going to start failing. And how long does it take for that tree to grow? To where it makes a difference, but the wind. There's a lot of questions nobody's answered because there's no information they care to give anything to go by. Now, I think you better back up and take a second look at this.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Luke Grant, followed by Richard Grant.
I'm not used to talking in front of people, so bear with me, but I don't know anything about solar panels. There's something I do know about is being a young farmer in Shenandoah Valley. We don't have that much land to spare to farm in this valley. I have tried to get what I have and it's hard to just do it in general. If it's even just given to you, it's hard, then it's very complicated. God, I'm so choked up. I'm sorry, but they, uh, it's not just my generation. It's the next generation. I've got a nephew, just born September thirtieth, sitting there holding him thinking, that's opportunity to be taken away from him. There's other solar farms going on in the county. You know, the one in Fairfield, that's another fifty acres or so being took away. I don't know. But that's a farm that always grew up thinking, man, it'd be cool to get the farm that one day. That's a dream. Dreams don't always come true. But somebody was going to farm it till the solar panels came in here. It was going to be up to somebody to do it. But if we keep taking away our precious farmland, we need to preserve it. I mean, it's, we don't have that much left to sacrifice. There may be a place for solar panels, but I don't think this is it. And I just got information about the topsoil in Fairfield. They already scraped everything off there, not putting the topsoil back on there. So all them flowers they're showing you, uh, it's hard to get anything grow without flowers. And we farm this farm. This one they're talking about, put solar panels on. I've farmed it. We, it's kind of hard for me to feed my cows a solar panel. And I don't want to eat a solar panel. I need that hay. It's what I used to feed my cows. So it's affecting me. It's affecting everybody in the community. They, uh, I can't just make that up overnight. You don't make more ground. This is all we got. Let's take care of it. Thank y'all.
Uh, Rich.
Richard Grant, followed by Cynthia Cantor.
Good evening. Well, you know, it's a lot to be said about just our right and left. But one way of looking at it is, we got, we got to preserve this land. I mean, that's all it is to it. We've worked this land. We mowed hay on this land. And we're just going to put corn on this ground. And let me ask you something, which would you rather see? Solar panels or corn stalks? Corn stalks is horrible still. You can redo the ground. You put grass back in, whatever you want. These solar panels, they will be there for what, 20, 25 years? Whatever it is. Then what do you do with them? There you are. You're stuck with this. And like I said, down the road, down the road, down the road, keep picking this can down the road. At the end of 20, 25 years, like I say, landfill, recycle, what do you do? I don't know. Does anybody really know? I mean, what do you do with this mess? Of course, stocks, you bush hog them up, you bale them up, feed them to cows, then go back and ground, black grass over top. And what do you want to do? It's recyclable. This stuff here, I don't know. Yeah, and there's a natural beauty to the county. You talk about natural beauty of this town. There's a natural beauty. Those people on the ridge roads looks over on that land every day. They don't want to see that crap. We don't need it. We don't want, you know, it's just, it's just an asshole. I mean, there's other ways of doing business. You know, energy is important. You know, there's plenty of gas, plenty of water to be dug. And cars right now are getting down to about zero emissions. We need to rethink a lot of this stuff, I think. So, you know, that's all, that's all I got to say, but really think hard about it when you make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Cantor, followed by Stephen Cantor.
Hi, thank you for listening to us. I have a statistic to make an exclamation point on these, these points these people are talking about. The World Bank says that there's only 18% of US land that is arable to grow crops. That's the whole United States. And so whatever they're taking up and whatever the other ones and the other six that you're going to hear tonight, they're taking out of that 18%. So keep that in mind. Any money that's going to go on is going to go out of state because I believe the lady that owns this lives in Maryland. So it isn't even going to be anything we can use here. No taxes, nothing. It's not helpful on our tax base. The other thing I want to talk about is we reviewed the volcano LLCs proposal and their reclamation costs. If you look at the bottom dollar figure of that, it's $218,000 to reclaim that. I mean, you were talking about replacing, not being able to replace all of the land, all of the topsoil that's been taken off. I mean, let's look at Alexander Farm. How much topsoil have they taken off? How can you replace topsoil for $218,000 on this much? I mean, replacing the topsoil alone is just going to be really expensive. So make sure that as a board, if you approve this for some crazy reason, you need to include higher costs for reclamation. I mean, look at what's going on in the Alexander Farm. How are we going to reclaim that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Cantor, followed by Hilton Harrison.
Hi, I'm Steve Cantor. I live on Mackey's Lane in the South River District. I thank you for listening. I just want to concur with everything that's been said so far. And my wife just stole a lot of my thunder. So let me skip to the point here. I and others have called or asked the planning commission and the board of supervisors to come up with regulations and rules to govern these permitting of these applications, these projects. And there was a citizens' letter published in the News Gazette on May 6, 2021, two and a half years ago. This was when the Dynamic Energy Project in Fairfield was being considered. This very astute person said, it is our responsibility now to put solar farm development rules, guidelines, and recommendations in place to preserve the quality of those solar farmlands and soils so that those lands may be put back into active and productive agriculture at the end of the lease term. Modern solar farms can be built using lightweight construction equipment without grading. Now, we've seen with the Fairfield project that they didn't do that. They used heavy equipment and they just stripped its topsoil. And it's because we had no rules in place to say, don't do that. So the News Gazette editorial, a couple of weeks after that letter, said, yes, we do need those. So the News Gazette is behind the idea of having solar farm ordinances. So where are those ordinances? I understand there was a working meeting before this one. I looked at, heard what some people said, looked at the minutes that were taken. We need those regulations now. And I would like us to just pause any more of these applications until.
I said, we all drill the perfor and he told me that's where they're going to be putting the fence sign, 35 yards from my back door. My well is exactly 25 yards from my back door. So and I've been looking at watching stuff and looking at studies and it shows about EMF and dirty energy. They're talking about the water. There's been so many tests done that it does contaminate the water. And there has been tests done that shows that these solar panels put out off a noise that can cause you to go deaf. That's been shown. I just think it's a bad idea. I mean, we got to save our land and I'm planning to leave my place when the good Lord takes me to my kids. So when I leave them to my kids, what are they going to see when they grow up and they have kids? All this mess behind the house. And as my understanding is too, is after they take these solar panels down, you cannot grow, put anything on that property for 10 to 20 years. You got to give it to 10 to 20 years, then you can start putting stuff back on there. So how are we going to do that? I oppose this.
Thank you.
Alan Stout, followed by Amy Moore.
Thank you for the chance to do words. I've listened to the people and I agree with them 100%. Especially from the gentleman from North Carolina. I've been traveling to Shenandoah Valley the last 45 years. And I love Shenandoah Valley so much that I moved here. And I, we live on the other side of Spencer's, between two beautiful farmlands. And one of the farmlands is being surveyed for a solar panel field. And the gentleman that I bought it from knows that I bought it because of the scenery. I paid good money, every, almost every penny we have to get this place. And we have a panoramic view. And they're talking about putting a solar field right on the hill that we look at to the south, which will destroy the aesthetic value. Not only that, it, it, it threatens our health because of electromagnetic radiation, which comes from the storage units that they store this power in. And how do they, how are they going to dispose of it? So there's health issues that are enormous. The aesthetic value is incredible to be ruined. In fact, the studies have said, when you have a solar field and you, you, that's all you, your eye sees when you look out. It's drawn right to the solar field and not all the surroundings that God had given us to enjoy. And I tell you, the thing that really breaks my heart. When I drive to Stanton to go to Aldi to do some grocery shopping and to drive down there and to look off, look off, the first time I looked off to the right and I saw all these holes sticking up and the, and the land stripped. I found out it was going to be a solar field there, broke my heart. I mean, it's amazing. It's, it's, and not only that, yesterday, the day before yesterday, we came back and I went down 11 and stopped and took pictures of it. And it is disgusting what it looks like. I don't care how many trees you plant, you're not going to, a tree won't stop the electromagnetic radiation that comes from this stuff. Okay? In fact, it's proven to shorten people's lives. And if you're hypersensitive to it, it actually can be fatal. You know, it's kind of like a 5G thing. And so when I hear people, they remind me kind of the government when Biden's talking, talking about how they care about the agriculture. They don't care about the agriculture. They could care less about the agriculture or the people. You're here to make a buck. And and I applaud the tax attorney here. I, I myself spent in public accounting with Price Waterhouse. I echo everything he said. We can't let this happen, especially for these people. I mean, these people, I mean, it breaks my heart. I love hearing the stories. I look out and see them. This is America. And we need you to protect, protect them. Hopefully, one day, protect my home site.
Thank you.
Amy Moore, followed by Calvert Fitzgerald.
Hi, I'm Amy Moore. I'm obviously from Rockbridge County. Brownsburg, 1793 is when we were established. Wade's Mill, Natural Bridge, BMI, Civil War, vineyards, old log cabins, timber frames. What is Rockbridge County about? We are about history. What is the history on a solar panel? Five minutes. I'm going to piggyback often, I know I got three minutes and I like to talk, so we've got a lot to say here. I'm piggybacking often Steve Hart, Mr. Tax Attorney, the Clarks, the Grants. I am a local business owner. Local business owners, you know what they do? They support local. You know who they're supporting? They're supporting our schools, they're supporting our Girl Scouts, these big companies. I'm part of the PTO. I go around doing fundraising. I'm part of my daughter's school fundraising committee. I show up at these big companies and I say, hey, would you be willing to support our school? We're having a bingo night. Guess what happens? Yes, I'd be happy to take your letter. We'll get back to you. Guess what? They never get back to us. You know who gets back to us? You want to know who buys Girl Scout cookies? The farmers. The farmers love to eat Girl Scout cookies when they're out doing these fields. My kids are always hitting up this crowd right here. This crowd right here are the ones that are supporting local. They are the ones standing up and doing what is right. That is my, my big question is great. When the lease is up, what happens? We're going to the next lease. Oh, that lease is up. We're going to the next lease. In 50 years, when the leases run up, what's going to happen to these solar panels? Is it going to be the eye store of our county? If you have an old log cabin sitting there deteriorating, guess what? It's part of Rockbridge County. If you have a solar panel sitting there deteriorating, like they said, we're not going to eat a solar panel. Are they going to be using local sources? They're not buying their material from Spencer's, a local company that supports local. They're not using our local excavators that have children that are going to our schools. There, we have these businesses, all these local businesses all around need help. I'm hiring, I'm hiring, I'm hiring. My local business is hiring. I can't get anybody. We're going to bring more people in and say they're going to work, you know, you support the community? No, you're taking away employees from me. When, sorry, I've got a lot of notes. Just think about it. Think about it carefully when you, you know, I know it's been said and said again. We've got this solar panel coming in. Let's stop. Let's be patient. Let's see what happens to this solar panel farm that we already have coming in because we can't get farmland back. And, you know, they were talking about the numbers and how small of a portion that we have for farming. The backbone of this company, the food that is feeding this world is from farmers. It's not from solar panels. Let's use rooftops for solar panels. Let's use roadsides or something like that down the middle of the median of the highways. Don't be going and taking our farmland.
Hello, I'm Calvert Fitzgerald. Everybody knows me as CS. I'm here on behalf of my family. And I agree with everything everybody said. My approach is a little bit different. We own a piece of land that joins us. If the roads will come along, the panels will be up against. One question I do have, and I want you all to find this out for me. The easement on Moore's Trail is an easement. We owned to the center of the road on our piece of property. When Bobby Burkstrasser wanted to put in an industrial park entrance into that piece of property that 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 family owns, it couldn't be done without us signing off, selling land, doing something. And Bobby's been a lifelong friend, but he got a little upset with us. But we said, no, we didn't want to do it. And it is a single track road up through there. I don't know what the easement is. But when they had the picture up, they were showing all these trees on all this property. And there was nothing along our property line. And that's the way the roads will come and part of the panel. That, that piece of property was an investment by my father and mother. My dad didn't really believe in saving money like most people. He believed in buying something that he thought he could sell one day to make some money off of. That place was listed for sale about 45 days ago. And the realtor said it was worth $12,400 an acre, rough math. Where they want to put this would be an excellent place if somebody wanted to farm it, build a house on top of that hill would be looking at Buell Land, which is absolutely beautiful. Y'all run 11 very much. Buell Land does a great job mowing. I'm around the turn there at my farm. I keep it mowed. If I wanted to bitch, I could stand here and say from my front porch, I will see this thing. But I think that there's a lot of things that needs to be addressed. I don't see how this is going to work. And like I said, I agree with everything they said, but I don't feel we need it and we're totally against it. But I just wanted to make those points that we need to really find out some information before we move forward anymore with that because they don't really have the width for an industrial and that's what it's got to be to go through.
Thank you.
That's everyone that's physically signed up or recognize anyone in the audience would like to speak.
We will now take comments via computer. Oh, we do have somebody.
You could come up, state your name and magistrateal district.
My name's Deanna Warner. I live in Rockbridge County, right across the highway from where they are going to put up all these solar panels. It will be an eyesore. Them little trees they're going to put up is not going to block that, our view. We have a almost, you know, 360 degree view of the mountains. And then there's going to be this huge solar panel farm right there. It, it's, I agree with everything everybody is saying, of course, about the land and ruining the land. But also the view. And I just with, if I have any time left, I'd like to give it to Mr. Clark so he can come back up here and speak or, or the attorney to come back up here and speak. But I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll now take comments via computer and phone. Little coercion is fine. Just a little bit. Okay. Hi, Izzy.
Hello. She's shy of her brother that.
Clearly did not get that from mother.
I'm not her mother.
No, from friend. Okay.
My brother spoke and my dad spoke. We have formed this land for a few years now. As Amy was saying, that she made a lot of the points. One thing that she informed me about that we are in a populated area. She